April 18th, regular Board of Education meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
Sandra Brandford.
Here.
Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister Lazari.
Here.
Erin Chandin.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hunt to introduce our star student.
Good evening and thank you. I would ask that John Fleming, please come forward. As if you're new to the meetings, we ask our elementary buildings, one per meeting, one time per year, to nominate a student to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It's quite an honor when you are the student selected, so John has obviously made a big impression with Dr. Harburg and the entire Lyons Elementary community. So the comments regarding John, this is where you look embarrassed, buddy. John is a true leader in the classroom. He contributes actively to discussion and holds himself accountable for submitting work that reflects his best efforts. Additionally, John has an outstanding mindset. Regardless of how challenging a task might be, he is always determined and willing to push himself to complete the activity. He's an exceptionally respectful and kind student to both his classmates and his teachers. He's always willing to work with different students and includes others that might be working by themselves. John is also the first student every day to say good morning or have a good night at the end of the day. Overall, John is truly a remarkable student who deserves to be recognized for his outstanding work ethic and his kindness towards other. The Lyons community is very proud of you, John. Please join me in congratulating John Fleming, the Star Stangled Speaker of the Month. All right, John, ask everybody to stand up.
Do you want to start?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
things from my report. I'll remind the community that our next meeting is on May 2nd at 8:00 a.m., where we will seat the new Board of Education after the election last month. So please take note that the next meeting is at a special time. Board members and community, please continue to watch for updates throughout the next few months. At Barrington High School, construction continues, as I mentioned last time. We'll have updates to the new front atrium, the athletic wing, and inside the building consolidation of student services. So all anticipated to be completed by the start of the next school year. So very exciting stuff. This coming Thursday, as I mentioned before, the board is going to tour various Illinois school, high school fine arts facilities. So just a reminder, Dr. Bynne sent an email today with our instructions and so forth, board, so please take a look at that email. And a reminder to the community that the tours are part of the process to create and design, to create the design work for the new, potential new fine arts facility for our community. Next week, the Barrington Area Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Luncheon will be held on Thursday. We all got that in our board packet, so make sure you talk to Janine if you are planning to attend. Janine needs no bite tomorrow, so please let her know. And then last, I wanted to just say thank you to the community and to the Barrington High School students and staff for their patience and flexibility as we navigated the events that occurred yesterday. And a special thank you to the Barrington High School staff and to the administration for acting swiftly and seriously to the threats made to Barrington High School. The board wants me to make sure the community knows that the student and staff safety continues to be a high priority for us. Okay? So next up is public comment. During public comment, we value your thoughts and opinions, and we recognize all voices and that are to be respected and heard in accordance with our Board Equity Statement that states that we recognize, embrace, and defend the identities and abilities of the voices of our diverse school community. Oh my gosh, I'm having a hard time tonight. Lots of special things happening tonight. So we have two people that have signed up for public comment, and these two people have spoken many times before, I believe. So can I just ask those of you that are going to speak, Marcia and Melissa, that you understand the Board Policy 830 and recognize that you do understand that? And I won't read through that whole thing. So with that, Marcia McClery, if you're good and understand that, please come forward.
Hello, Marcia McClery. We've lived in the district a while. I have five children and four of which attend D-220. I just wanted to say a sincere thank you to Angela Wilcox for her eight years of service to District 220 families and the students, and your diligence and ethics and research is stunning and we'll surely miss you, but happy that you're moving on to a new chapter and enjoy your Tuesdays.
Thank you, Marcia. Melissa?
My name is Melissa Atterbury, and I'm the President of the BEA, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the BEA tonight, and we wanted to make sure that we took the time to thank Angela and Dr. Hunt for their service all of these years. Angela, you've done this job for eight years. That's no small task. During your time on the board, District 220 planned and passed a building referendum. All of our schools have benefited or will be benefiting from these updates. You helped us to maintain our AAA bond rating, develop a strategic plan, and implement innovative new curriculum. In no way is this an easy job, yet you have made it look easy. You always have a smile on your face and often try to lighten the mood with humor. You have proposed compromises in an attempt to reach middle ground when there have been disagreements. Thank you for your years of service to the student, staff, and community of 220. Dr. Hunt, you came into the district during a difficult time, but we immediately felt your leadership. We appreciate the fresh set of eyes you brought to the district. You came in ready to listen and worked hard to understand our strengths and challenges. Through the We Belong campaign, you worked to unite the district, helping us to see that we are all in this together and we all play an important part. We know that the decisions you made were with the best interests of students and staff at heart, and for that you will be missed. We wish you the best of luck back home in Ohio. Thank you to both of you for your service to the community, educators, and kids. Your dedication is evident and is clear. Your successors will have big shoes to fill.
Thank you, Melissa. All right. Or we can clap. We can clap. We can take. We'll clap a little more when we get to those discussion items as well. So Dr. Hunt, I'll turn it over to you for your report.
Okay, that's tough. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you. I just want to mention on the bomb threat as well, I want to recognize our staff, our administration at Barrington High School, and our students as well. You don't have an event like that with 2,800 students dismissing without a tremendous amount of effort and people stepping forward to make that possible, so we certainly appreciate that. I will say, anytime we have an issue of safety and security, when there's an event, we take time to debrief, and that debrief will be ongoing over the course of the next couple of weeks. We started that process yesterday as exec council came together and had conversations about areas for improvement. One of the things I think we can stress and remind our families, all of this information is out on the web and you put it out there, but until something happens is kind of when you look for it. When we have a crisis like that, I think as a parent, our initial gut reaction is we want to know where our kid is and we want to come find our student immediately. And actually, in those types of events, that can create a much larger issue. But I appreciate very much the communication that went out and we did ask and make the decision based on the climate to dismiss, the parents coming in an organized manner and moving students along. So we'll continue that debrief, and I'm sure Dr. Winkelman will share information with the Board of Education and the community as we go forward. Just a couple of things. You did appoint Joshua Barillo as superintendent for half a day, and I think one of my most memorable half-days or days here in Barrington 220. Joshua made quite an impression throughout the course of the day, and we just had a great time in various meetings, going over and looking at referendum, taking him out to meet some of the baseball players and throwing out one of the first pitches at Fields of Dreams, talking to Dr. Bynne about arrival time at work. It was a great day all the way around, Dr. Bynne, wasn't it? So we just appreciate the board supporting that, and certainly, I think that's something that we will all remember going forward, so thank you. Also want to highlight the continuation of the movement forward with the referendum project as the Board of Education and staff as well as community celebrated the ribbon cutting at Huff Elementary. It's another monumental step forward. It's another monumental step forward in terms of the $147 million referendum, and I don't, I hope these don't become commonplace or taken for granted because the significance of the renovations and the impact that it'll have on students is long-lasting for years and years to come. So I think it's just really important that we recognize and celebrate progress as it moves forward. So congratulations to the entire Huff community, and you always go back to only possible because the community stepped forward and supported that referendum and renovations throughout the district. I wrapped up the last join us for Java of the year. It was a great opportunity for me to say how wonderful Barrington 220 was to engage a group of people, and then just when they had questions, I was able to stand up and walk out and turn over to Dr. Winkelman. But I want to thank all the board members that were able to attend along the way through the year and the community members as well. I think we started this looking for more authentic ways to engage and talk to our community about our schools in a less formal environment, and if that's the gauge of success, I think it was a very successful endeavor. And I know Dr. Winkelman has made comments about looking at how to continue that kind of dialogue and conversation with our community and our staff and parents as well moving forward. So appreciate those of you who were able to attend. And then lastly, I feel like there should be a drum roll because this is, I'm just rolling this out tonight. We were informed on Thursday that we received approval from ISBE that we have been approved for five career pathway endorsements in the district. So in the last two years, we've gone from zero endorsements to five career pathway endorsements. To do this is an intensive process that although I'm speaking at the microphone, I had very little to do with. It was all the work of our staff along the way. We had to develop pathway coursework, create internships, internship opportunities, and community advisory teams to be eligible and apply for those things. I will say, this directly correlates with Framework 220, as we heard from our community that having various path and passion, that students could pursue opportunities they had passion in, was something that came through loud and clear, and this aligns with that work. And of the five new pathways, we are the first school district in the state of Illinois to offer agriculture, food, and natural resources. So just a huge success for and a lot of hard work by our staff. And I know Dr. Byrne will be talking a little bit more about this when she comes up to give an update, a brief update to the Board of Education tonight.
That sounded like a directive.
I only have a few left in me. I want to put it up to you. So, board, you do, or you should have, an enrollment spreadsheet in front of you. Again, we'll continue to highlight this as we go through the spring, and I'm sure that process will continue. You will see, if you look at Roseland, that we have added a section in kindergarten. I think we pointed that out at the last meeting. We continue to watch growth at Rose Elementary in second grade, and we are kind of finalizing CI into a language, so you'll see that kind of pop up at our next meeting. So continue to strive to achieve the, you know, the guidelines established by the Board of Education, and certainly we'll continue to update you as we go through from enrollment standards. So if there's any questions, happy to answer them. If not, that would conclude my report.
Quick question. Were we able to get back to the parents that had asked about the fourth grade at Rose?
Yeah, we did send a communication to families.
Any other questions from the board? Everybody's taking your...
I apologize if you've addressed this in the past. At Sunny Hill, I'm looking at fifth grade, and I'm noticing that Section 3 has 26. I'm sorry, I'm just noticing that there's an imbalance in Section 3 versus Section 1, 1 and 2. Is there, is that just pending readjustment?
Here. Sunny Hill. I can probably answer that.
So I'm assuming that's dual language. We've got 26 in...
It'd be the bilingual.
The bilingual, whatever it was.
26 is one-way emergent, and then the Section 1 and Section 2 are the CIO model that we use. And that is, if we put that together, it would be over-class guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions for Dr. Hunt, I'll ask if we have any questions about the informational reports. Okay, let's move on to board committee reports. None. I know we've got some actions from finance.
Met before the previous board meeting, and we talked about those action items. Yeah, so we're good.
All right, so I have two committees to share about, share with. First is the Health Insurance Committee. We've met three times over the last three or four months, and we've finally come up with a, I guess, a plan. So just, I'll read from our committee notes. The inflation pressure that has already affected many costs at our district are now starting to impact our insurance costs. Our district participates in insurance co-op with many other districts, so we can share expenses, both good and bad. And the entire co-op, along with other health insurance co-ops that we have researched, are all seeing significant increases this year. Health insurance is just really skyrocketing. And this has been now coupled with higher claim rates. Barrington has been no exception. Our district has experienced a very high loss ratio in the last year, where our claims were much higher than premiums paid. This is attributed to a high usage of the insurance plan and a larger number than typical of high-cost claimants. So not only have we had more claims, but the higher cost ones have been significantly higher. We've had significant illness and/or, you know, needs. So it's important to the Insurance Committee to continue to offer a PPO and HMO single plan at no cost to staff. So all staff will have an option to have a plan, either a PPO or HMO, where there's no cost for a single coverage, not for family coverage, but for single coverage. And we were able to accommodate that through plan design changes. Unfortunately, no cost means higher deductibles. I mean, you know, we can't just give away, unfortunately. So, you know, it's not ideal. Each year, things change, but we do have these no-cost plans. The overall increase, board, this is important, the overall increase to the district will still remain at our 3%. That's what we budgeted. So unfortunately, the majority of the increase, if it's not the very lowest cost plans, is going to be borne by our employees, both through the BEA and the BSEO. So they're seeing a significant increase in what they're going to be paying in terms of premiums. But we have achieved what we wanted, which is 3% increase from the district standpoint, and we still offer a no-cost plan to employees that want that. Second, Facilities Committee has met. And just to be clear, the 2023 summer projects, we've all approved already, and they're kind of working on getting those started so that right when school ends, we can go right into getting things done. So we've approved those already. Building and Grounds is now working to get them started. What we've talked about now, and this may seem like premature, but now we're talking about the summer projects for 2024. And we've decided, we're moving things up slowly, that the timing is consistent with what we've been talking about now, which is basically getting bidding in the fall. We used to get bidding in the late winter and early spring, and we're moving it up to the fall. By bidding projects in the fall, we can get favorable pricing from bidders. We think we can save some money for the district. So projects discussed include electrical work at Lines, flooring replacement at Sunny Hill, Grove, Barbara Rose, and BHS, painting at BHS. It sounds like we're way behind on getting those hallways painted at BHS. And replacement of playgrounds at Grove, the large playground at Grove and the small playground at Countryside. As well as redoing the locks at some of the other schools, we're doing BHS this summer, but we're going to do the other schools next summer. And then paving and roofing like we always do. So these are prioritized by what needs to be done, and remember, this is not referendum work. This is above and beyond referendum work, just keeping our schools in good shape. So our community's investment in the schools, we want to make sure that we continue to take care of our, the investment that we have done in the past. And so we coordinate with principal requests and what our Building and Grounds Committee does, and of course, what our great Building and Grounds employees do. So our plan will be to bring these recommendations to a meeting in May, and that's where we're going to ask for architecture and engineering fees. We want to get money ahead of time so we can start planning on this, and then we'll have more, a formal recommendation in the fall when we know exactly what we're going to be doing. So that's our plans. We're moving ahead, 2023. We're all full steam ahead at 2024. We're in the planning stages. So, thank you.
Okay, any other committee reports? All right, hearing none, let's move to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, while you guys are making sure that you see the revised personnel report, I will just list what we have on our consent agenda tonight. We have open and closed minutes from April 4. We have several finance reports, March reports for exception bills, activity accounts, BHS and K through 8, wage and payroll report for March, treasurer's report for March, revenues and expenditures for March, and April reports for both the bill lists and the NSLP bill list. And then last, as I've already mentioned, we have the revised personnel report. Any questions or comments about what's on the consent agenda? All right, let's do a roll call.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next, let's move into our action items. Do I have a motion to consider to approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal due to reduction in force of part-time or full-time educational support staff?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Hunt, do you want to just give a, your staff want to give a quick overview?
Yeah, the board, you did receive a memo on this. This is in the annual Board Action with Personnel, where we conduct a reduction in force of BSEO employees. We do this from, you know, one, to align with the contract, but two, ensuring that we are running as efficient as possible as we move forward. And recall is necessary, we'll go ahead and recall those positions.
Board, any questions? All right, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next up is, do we have a motion to approve the Sedexo contract renewal?
So moved.
So we talked about that. Leah, you gave an overview at the last meeting. Is there anything else we want to, any questions or want to just highlight the increases, what they...
I would just stress, board, we're finishing the fourth of a five-year contract.
Yep.
There's a 3% cap on that contract going into last year. You will have to look at bidding next year. And I would just, we've talked about increases in costs. Food is certainly one of those. Our partners with Sedexo have had to work very hard to deliver upon the contract that we have right now. I just commend the district. It was not here when this was originally signed, but to put these caps in place, obviously, is protecting the district from being subject to significant inflationary rises.
I have a quick question for Dr. Bynne. Last year, I think you said something that there was some legislation going on with regard to like assessing on taste as a factor? Is there, is there any updates to that? Can you remind us what that was about?
Sure. Illinois was one of only two or three states in the country that had only objective pass/fail criteria for selecting food service vendors and required only really cost as the primary factor. There's legislation that changed that put us in line with the vast majority of other states that will allow some things like, does the food taste good, to be a factor? So that has been, that law's now in place. So during this school year, in the bidding cycle, there are a few districts that are out. The Illinois State Board of Education, I'm not sure if they weren't really staffed and ready for that, or they don't really like it, but they were continuing to push districts this year to continue with the same approach that was in place prior to that. So there's been a heavy lift from some districts to be able to use the new law as it has been passed by the General Assembly. We think that's going to actually make it a little easier next year. There've been a lot of districts that have pushed off based on the ability to extend, even if they were in their last year of their contract, is we did provide an exception to be able to go one more year. We think there's going to be a larger group of districts that will go out next year, and we'll have a slightly different bidding approach and landscape that I think will allow us to be able to provide something that better meets our needs. Though, as Dr. Hunt mentioned, there's been an incredible increase in food costs. I talked about that during the January committee, the whole meeting. So I'm anticipating that there's probably going to be a jump in prices, no matter what we do, but I'm hopeful that won't be the case, that will really impede our ability to deliver an excellent program for our students.
I ask because we get lobby quite a bit from our students on the taste of their lunch, and so it sounds like maybe it could be a factor for the next bidding cycle with...
It is, absolutely. But I would also just remind the board and our parents that we do have to comply with the nutrition standards for the National School Lunch Program for our NSLP schools, K-8. Those standards require ongoing decrease in sodium content. It's already fairly low and not always very consistent with what most families do at home. There's also a higher requirement for whole grains, which sometimes taste different or have different textures associated with them. They're also associated with it, again, a little bit different than what many families experience at home. So that has actually been a big challenge, not just here in Barrington, but for all school districts across the country participating in the National School Lunch Program.
Just think though, before we renegotiate next year, I'd like to have some kind of a mini-study on what's actually getting eaten and what's getting dumped out. It's great if it's nutritious, but if they're not eating it, it doesn't do anybody any good.
We always have to comply with nutritional standards of the program, and we certainly look for opportunities to be able to get feedback from our students. Ms. Lager and I have spent time during this year out at our schools, sitting with students, eating the same food that they are, although we actually get one of every entree to be able to try that, which sometimes raises some eyebrows among students. But as we get into next fall, we actually will be convening some feedback opportunities about our program so that we can build bid specifications that are consistent with the interests of the district.
If it matters, Joshua, superintendent for the day, the hot dogs at Grove must stay. Thank you.
Excellent. I assume the hot dogs are the same everywhere, so.
Yeah.
All right, are we ready for a roll call? All right, let's do it.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Another action item, do we have a motion to approve the student breakfast and lunch prices as presented? Okay. Excellent.
So I think also addressed by Leah at last meeting, this was discussed at finance meeting, and annually, districts are required to assure that we're in compliance with the paid lunch equity requirement, which, you know, with that calculation, we're recommending an increase of 10 cents for breakfast and lunch prices. So this is a required recommendation.
Okay. Any questions? The new lunch price will be $3.15, and the new breakfast price would be $1.60. Okay, do a roll call.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Another finance action from, that we talked about last meeting, do we have a motion to approve the minibus lease extension?
So moved.
Second.
Again, I think talked about at our last meeting, but typically, we maintain a three-year replacement cycle for our vehicles. We talked about inflation. The other thing that we are dealing with nationally is supply chain issues. chain issues. So instead of looking for new at this point, we are recommending that we extend our lease one additional year.
Dr. Hunt, we looked for new. We can't find them. Keep looking, yes.
Is the hope that maybe a year from now we'll be able to get them?
Yes.
The supply may increase by then, and maybe the price will even come down, who knows? Hopefully, yeah.
All right, let's do a roll call.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We have one more action that I will make the motion on. I move to uphold the suspension issued to student 505009 on March 20th on 2023. Do we have a second? Any questions?
We could review this in closed session, why don't we go ahead with the roll call?
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Larry, excuse me, Barry Altshuler. Well, you could be Larry.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Let's move to our discussion items. Dr. Hunt, you want to?
Sure.
Here she comes.
We have a update this evening from Teaching and Learning and Student Services. We will ask Dr. Lozwicki and Dr. Burn to provide that update for the Board of Education.
Hi, everybody.
Oh, goodness.
I thought I slid it in there very stuff. Guess not.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. We are here to provide two updates for you this evening that are actually aligned to all six of our strategic priority areas. The first update is related to our social emotional learning curriculum review process update, and the second relates to our career pathway endorsements.
Beginning earlier this year, the curriculum review process for our district's social emotional curriculum, we asked for volunteers to serve on this team and formed our social emotional steering team. This team of amazing professionals is comprised of general education teachers, related services, personnel, specialists, principals, district office administrators, and we have representation from every building in District 220. We have met three times so far and have one more meeting scheduled for May. As a reminder, our curriculum review process is four stages, and the SEL steering team is in stage one, which is in the research and study phase. Castle is a collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning and was founded in 1994, and Illinois was the first state to adopt the SEL standards in 2004. Castle's work is designed to help us as educators select an evidence-based SEL program that best meets the needs of their school community. Castle's framework takes a systematic approach that emphasizes the importance of establishing equitable learning environments and coordinating practices across key settings of classrooms, schools, families, and communities.
Okay, so the SEL steering team has kept Castle at the forefront of everything that we've been doing this school year, and we've been using the four guiding questions of Castle in order to create the priorities for our district. So those four guiding questions talk through what kind of program we would need to include so that it meets the needs of our student population and their families. We want to look at what kind of program approach makes sense based on the needs of all of our teachers. We also want to look at the goals that we should keep in mind when selecting an SEL program, and also the school priorities that will need to align with an evidence-based program and how that works with an SEL need. So the committee looked at those four guiding questions and came up with the identified priorities that you see on the screen here. So the team has determined that this is what is important to our district. So a homeschool connection, staff buy-in, something that's developmentally appropriate, something that has common language and scaffolding, consideration of our equity and restorative practice work, a personalized learning experience with a strong parent and community component, robust staff training, a blended and multimodal approach, and something that is also trauma-informed. Our next steps are going to be to utilize the identified priorities that the team came up with, and we have taken the 85 Castle-aligned resources, and we've already narrowed them to 12. We're using the Castle evidence-based program rubric to evaluate all 12 of those resources to narrow it down even further. And then during year two, the team will start to make plans for professional learning and will bring any recommendations that we have to the board.
All right, that wraps up social emotional learning, and now we're going to shift over to career pathway endorsements. Do you want to ask questions on Castle or on the SEL first?
I was just wondering, will the same team then continue on next year? You're not going to get a whole new group to?
Correct, it will be the same team.
Great.
Any other questions on that?
What will we do with those 12 resources? Or, once we narrow it down to more, like, how are those going to be utilized in our SEL programming?
So we have the 12, so Castle has 85 programs that they currently recommend that are aligned to the Castle priorities. Given what we have determined to be our needs in the district, we have narrowed it from 85 to 12. The goal is to get from 12 to one. So right now, we're still looking at 12, and we're going to use the Castle-aligned program evaluation rubric to narrow it down even further so that we can eventually have one that we would recommend.
So it's one holistic program that we would integrate?
Correct, a program or resource, depending on the direction that we go. But, so we've gotten to 12, we need to get to one, so that'll be coming back.
As far as when you stated that Castle was founded in 1994 and Illinois adopted it, the SEL standards, so that, can you just expound on that a tiny bit to explain to the community how that works?
That means that the SEL standards have been in place in Illinois since 2004, and that we are, that's what we're basing our, our evidence-based program on, the Castle-aligned stand, and the Illinois standards for SEL. Been quite a while.
All right, are we good to move on to career pathway endorsements? Okay, so as a reminder, the career pathway endorsements are part of a piece of legislation called the Post-Secondary and Workforce Writingness Act that was passed in 2016. And the career pathway endorsement portion of the PWR Act is inclusive of seven different career pathway endorsement areas, which are based on the 16 national career clusters. And Ben will explain this in just a couple later slides. But students who earn a career pathway endorsement engage in rigorous coursework as relates to a series of career-focused courses, as well as some very rigorous professional learning or work-based learning such as an internship. And so Dr. Hunt mentioned our five career pathway endorsement areas that we just got approved for, and more specifically, those areas are within agriculture, food, and natural resources related to our horticulture pathway. The health sciences and technology pathway is related to our certified nursing assistant program. The information technology pathway is our computer programming pathway. The finance and business service pathway is related to our entrepreneurship program and pathway. And then the human and public service pathway is related to our education pathway.
Yes, so these are the seven seals that students will now have an opportunity to earn, I'm sorry, seven seals, five seals. These are the seals that students will be able to earn on their transcripts, as well as their diplomas, by meeting a set of requirements. And so the requirements can be displayed through this kind of token student here to kind of earn an endorsement. So the work that the student would have to take to earn an endorsement involves having an individualized plan, that involves career exploration, counseling, as well as being able to take college-level English and math classes when they graduate. Additionally, they'd have to take career classes or CTE classes. Including in that pathway would have to include at least six hours of early college credit within those career courses. Additionally, the student would have to engage in real-world problems and get feedback from professionals from the field. In addition to that, they would have to meet at least 60 hours of an internship. The value of these endorsements, though, are many, so some of it just comes down to the individual value of them. So the career-ready skills, the fact that they're ready for a workplace experience, and also they're college-ready, all in one package. Additionally, there's a local value in terms of being able to network students to local professionals, which would be useful on referrals or like applications, those kind of things. Additionally, to local benefits that the district and the community can develop. There is developing state and national benefits to these as well. One of these that's already finalized is that a student who earns an endorsement in education goes right to the finalist round of the Golden Apple Scholarship for students who want to become a teacher. Additionally, this is a great way for students to build a resume with experiences and skills that they can throw right on there. And finally, the last piece is just the spirit of the work. So the idea is that it encourages students to be thoughtful about their post-secondary planning, no matter what pathway they decide to take. Additionally, it's just a great opportunity for students to see what they do like and also what they don't like as well, in high school. And all this aligns to how we plan to help support students to reach whatever their career and life goal is through a variety of supports, whether it's youth science or counseling program, career exploration, coursework, work-based learning, post-secondary training. The idea is that we want to really support students through a variety of opportunities here at the high school.
For a brief update.
Well, really, this is, this is very important work, and we don't need to really be brief. We have to, you guys did a good, a good job of giving those updates. Are there any questions?
This is cutting edge.
Yeah.
This is, this is phenomenal.
Yeah, so just to give you a little bit broader frame of reference, so the Post-Secondary Workforce Writingness Act passed in 2016, and we are one of only 16 districts in the state to even be offering career pathway endorsements in general. So of those 16, which is a really limited number, and being the first in the state to offer the agriculture, food, and natural resources, we're very proud and excited to be leading the way in this work.
Excellent job. It's very exciting. If you haven't had a chance to see the greenhouse, it's really phenomenal, too.
And Ben did say seven because there are seven career pathway endorsements that you can work towards, and we also do have plans in place to seek the other two that we don't currently have.
I was going to ask if there were others that we were going to seek or that we didn't quite get the endorsement for yet. So there's two others we're working on.
What are those two?
Well, we have a journalism pathway that would be aligned to the arts. Arts and communications pathway, as well as the engineering pathway. Then do you have to ensure that you have classes lined up? Like, is that how? The classes lined up, and then the heavy lift is really ensuring the six early college credit hours. So we have an engineering pathway right now, and we have a journalism pathway right now, and we're working on securing those six early college credit hours to make sure that the courses that we do have also ensure that a student can get college credit for those courses as well.
Students will achieve this next year, are we, or are they still in the pathway?
So for sure, next year, and we're currently analyzing student transcripts to see which of our students who are already in the pathway can earn it this year. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next, our next discussion topic is our agenda for May 2nd. We will have a regular meeting and then an organizational meeting. We'll approve the canvassing completed by Cook County as a result of the April 4th school board election.
Can I just ask informationally, does Cook County get information from the other counties and give us one final number, or do we have to go to the other counties to?
Cook County will assemble it for us, right?
Is that right? Okay.
So we don't have to do that on our own.
Okay, good to know.
I think this is only the second election that Cook County has provided that service for us. And then we'll have an organizational meeting where we will, I would recommend that we all take the oath of office and welcome our new board members, and we'll appoint a temporary chairperson and then elect our officers. And then have, approve our Board of Education meeting dates as well. So keep that in mind. I would recommend we add the organizational meeting so we don't have to put that right on for the, for the organizational meeting in two years. Put that right on there. So we don't have to find a date. It'll already be there. And then we will discuss anything that we, any agenda items for May 16th. That anybody wanted to add to those meetings? I will remind the, the board members and the community that this meeting will take place on May 2nd at 8:00 a.m.
Are we going to do the BSEO reclassification, or are we taking that off?
We agreed that we would do that at May 16th.
Okay, so we'll take it off the May 2nd?
Yeah. And then I would just remind the board that we may need to go into closed session on May 2nd, and if we do, we would do that after the open session portion.
Real quick question, just for planning purposes, should we allocate an hour and a half, like a typical close?
The world of the unknown.
How about we give an update at the, in the next superintendent report with what we anticipate we might, time we might need? Is that okay?
I'll block it anyways.
Yeah.
I would maybe block an hour, an hour.
Probably an hour for the open and then an hour for the closed, is what I'm thinking off the top of my head. Okay. All right, are we ready to move on to our next discussion item? Next, we would like to recognize Dr. Hunt. We would like to present, and as you maybe take a look at that, if any of the board members would like to.
That's beautiful, thank you very much.
What does the inscription say? Thank you for?
Thank you for your service. Dr. Rob, your personal excellence in every manner.
Excellent. Hopefully you can put that on your desk and remember us.
I will do that.
We all wish you well. Do board members want to make any comments?
Going in any order, or I'll start it?
Go ahead.
So, so Bob, two years was just way too short, way too short, but so much has happened in two years. I mean, besides COVID, which we won't even talk about, Framework 2020, just the blended learning that you've started, and, you know, we're going to really explode with it, but we have you to thank for that. And of course, just the "we belong," just getting the community involved and putting your stamp on the community in two short years. It's just been amazing how you've embraced our community, and you've worked very hard to hear all sides when there was some discord, and I just appreciate, you know, your, your being able to make that balance. I got to know you a little better through, when we were at Triple I, where we could kind of get out of the boardroom and just kind of be a little more, you know, informal, and it was great to get to know you and, you know, really get to know what, you know, what's happening with your family. And I know you're heading off to Ohio. You know, I don't know how much of a fan, sports fan you are, but I think, you know, being in Illinois, kind of had to do things under the table, now you can, you know, you can embrace, you know, the Hawkeyes and the Indians and the Cavaliers and, you know, you, you won't be outnumbered by the Cubs fans and the Sox fans, so.
Thank you, it's been heartbreaking.
But anyways, I wish you and your family well. You will really be missed, and please, let's keep in touch.
Thank you, Barry, I appreciate that.
Just to, just to continue on that note, I so appreciate your leadership that you've shown us and all the initiatives that you've worked on. You came to this community and you started out at a run, you know, meeting everyone, having get-to-know-you sessions at every single school and every community event, and, you know, with the board, with the staff, with the families, with the students, and your listening tour was like very large, and then that folded right into the framework and continued on with listening and finding out what are we really cared about. You've done some great work, and yeah, you know, I miss you. It's not too short, and I wish you the best in your future work there, getting someone excellent back in Ohio and, you know, have success there, I'm sure you will.
When we first found out you were leaving us, I
When we first found out you were leaving us, I said it felt like, you know, Steve and Katie and I joined right around the same time you did, and it seemed like you shouldn't leave as long as we were here. It's still hard to let you go. So, yeah, I just want to thank you so much for coming in, living in our community, being, really weaving yourself into the fabric of our community and, instead of coming in and saying, hey, you should do this, this, and this, you spent so much time in conversation and listening to every, every aspect and every, and I know that you responded to many, many, many emails, so thank you for doing that, and at all times of the day. So you didn't have to do all times of the day, but thank you so much for being so responsive. And then the two hashtag campaigns you led, See the Student and We Belong, I think truly showed your heart for wanting every student and every member of our 220 community to feel included and to feel seen, and I think that's just so valuable. Upper Arlington is really, really fortunate to have you, and I'm going to miss our conversations about the Browns. Sorry, Sandra, I think you're more Browns than Bengals, right? So.
Somebody has to be.
But yeah, just keep in touch. Come visit anytime you're around Chicago, and yeah, it's been, it's been a pleasure to collaborate and work together, so thank you for your time here.
Yeah, well, I'll echo Erin. I feel like we started this journey together two years ago, so this is not cool. But I'm grateful for your guidance. We hit the ground running through coming out and through a terrible time, and your guidance was amazing. I know you've made the best decision for your family, but we are going to miss you. Ohio was lucky to get you, so thank you for helping bring us out of the pandemic, your work on Framework 20, our very short and sweet and frank conversations. I will miss those, and the community has been very lucky to have you, so good luck.
To close out the trio, I echo what they said, and I also echo what Barry and Leah said, you know, you've been a great asset to this community. It'll certainly miss you. I mean, Upper Arlington's gain will certainly be our loss, so, but we are, I can confidently say that the community's very appreciative for the time that we did have you. And, you know, I just want to share a quick story about Dr. Hunt. So the first time I met him was actually at Countryside Field Day. I was volunteering, and while I didn't see this, I understand that you actually volunteered to be in the dunk tank that day. So, you know, for one of your first appearances here in, you know, D220, you were honestly ready to be dropped in water at the whim of any, you know, elementary student at Countryside. So, you know, kudos to you for always being there, being present, being, you know, just part of the community. You know, I know friends that I've, you know, we've made together, will miss you as well, and that goes a long way to just kind of showing not just your professional, but your human side. So, you know, thank you for all that you've done. We'll miss you, and, you know, best of luck to you as, you know, you continue your career and, you know, hopefully, and I have no doubt, but hopefully we'll cross paths at some point.
That makes me remember my fun memory of you was coming to Winterfest and meeting you, and your family were there, walking around outside. It was the outside one, and there was the movie on the front of the high school.
Yes.
And I was like, oh my goodness, he's the Grinch. He's got a heart of gold, like, oh my goodness, the whole family was in it, and I was like, wow, this is great, and we watched it, and your kids were just like, yeah.
I rewarded it.
I do, too. I do, too.
Let's make that disparage to you. Oh, we're standing at Upper Arlington. Oh, very much.
Well, I just want to say that, you know, I echo what everyone has already said. I, for being here for such a short time, you truly are a Barringtonite. You embraced everything in our community from, you know, generally speaking, your love of kids, the fact that you are doing this because that's where your heart is. It's not that this is a job, it's your passion. When you first moved in, I never received so many calls and texts, I just saw the new superintendent. He's eating, he's eating at Francesca's. I saw him on vacation, like, it's so, it created a buzz and an excitement that was so necessary to be infused into our community at a time where there was a lot of just kind of trying to pick things back up after the pandemic and figure out our way forward, and you did that strongly, you know, with a clear definition, and I will always appreciate that. You know, I love the fact that I would bump into you in your crazy Halloween costumes and we would hang out and just have fun, because not only are you, like, you know, people have said, a true professional, but also a very kind human, and I've appreciated the friendship that we've made. I appreciate your quick wit, your sense of humor, your ability to call me out, and your mutual love of short meetings. I will wrap that.
Without further ado.
When I was calling your references, the gentleman that I spoke with, I believe he was on your board, said, with Bob, you've got to let him go. You've got to let him lead and let him do what he's going to do, because that's when he thrives. And I hope that anyone at your new district listening to that will also take that. Have all of those multiple characteristics that make a really, really good leader, and I'm proud that I was able to serve with you.
Okay, but to honor both you and Angela, I will be very brief. That the board members did an excellent job of representing you, and we're all grateful for your leadership in 220. I personally am grateful for our partnership in the last two years, and I've learned from you, and I'm better because of you, and this is not goodbye, but we'll see you again soon or talk to you later.
That's nice. I will say the agenda item, we always review the board agenda and executive council, and the agenda, this agenda item popped up on Monday without my consent, because I feel like I've, I guess, have made statements, but a couple of things I would say. One, I want to talk as a parent first. My kids, and that's why, you know, Janie and I was talking about, you know, picture, my kids have absolutely thrived here, and that's because of the community we live in, the school, the professionals, the staff. It is one of the most difficult parts of this decision was knowing that I was going to have to pull them out of that environment. So I want you to know from a parent perspective, somebody who has a little bit of insight in education, what goes on every single day in our schools has proven to be very, very effective, both socially, emotionally, and academically for my kids. And when I look back and I say, what am I going to take away? I'm going to, I'm going to take two kids who are in a much better place because of their experience here in Barrington. And then I flip to, you know, the professional side, and I said this a few meetings ago when we made this announcement. What makes Barrington special, both as a community and the people that work here are just that, the people, the people that care, people that sit at the table over there, the people that come here and talk about the passionate they have for education. And, you know, I have a lot of people shake my head, shake my hand and thank me and talk about the divide, but the reality is, this is a great place. It will continue to be a great place because of people that sit on these boards and sit in those seats and work so hard every single day. I will be back because you will be doing things that are innovative and that I'm going to have to learn from and bring people to see. So I'll meet you at Francesca's at the end of that day, and I appreciate it very much. And I'd end with this, Steve, you know, you brought up something, you know, in the dunk tank as a new superintendent, that that was very, very important to my success and integration, and I feel like it's very, very important that the next superintendent repeat that and do that this spring. So, you know, I will continue to support and transition. I may throw a ball or two at the dunk tank.
I mean, Roslin also has one, I'm just saying.
We can hit all the elementary.
I would like to request a board text of when that's going to occur, so we can all be there.
But in all seriousness, and I've said this before publicly as well, this board made, spent the time to make the right decision, and I am very confident the work that we have started will continue under Dr. Winkelman's leadership. So Greg, I wish you the best of luck. This seat is going to be yours, and I know that you will value it, care about it, and continue the work of 220. So thank you.
We didn't get your consent on this either, but I'm going to be real brief. Your time was short, but your impact is large in 220, and we know you're going through a transition, so this gift is themed around transition, and I'll let you open it.
With that group, it's very scary. Oh, wow. How in the world?
What?
Upper Arlington. Very nice.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. What does the mascot for Upper Arlington? Suitcase to pack with. Is this like, hey, get the stuff out of the office, please? Thank you very much. Thank you.
There you go.
Oh, it's nice.
I'm going to have to tell my new team they're falling behind already.
Very nice.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
We all wish you the best. Let's see if I can, if I can keep it together here. And next, we want to recognize our retiring board member. Angela, we have a little gift for you as well. And you have lots of flowers. I'm so glad you've got people to have you.
I know, I am, too.
So we have, and maybe we'll take a picture at the end? Does that sound good, Scotty?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Can I help you?
Yeah. Oh my gosh, it's so beautiful, you guys. Look, I feel like I want something. Thank you so much. It says Barrington 220 School Board Member in the years. Thank you.
I know that people have some things to say.
Before you do that, I think I get to kick it off.
Oh, excellent.
So I think first of all, no one knows the amount of time it takes to be a successful board member unless you sit up here, and I think people that have an interest and pursue this endeavor says a lot about the person they are because of how much effort and energy you have to put in to do this job right, and Angela, you have done this right. I have the opportunity to look back or, and share tonight what's happened over eight years, and too often, or so often, I think we're all this way, and I know you're this way professionally, it's what do I have to accomplish today? What do I have to move forward today and keep things moving forward? And you don't realize the tremendous impact that you've had over time. So when you look back over eight years at what has happened in Barrington 220, it is just, it amazes me, and you're at the center of that work by serving on this board of education. So here we go down History Lane, and I'll be quick. In 2015, Huff Elementary, and you can start to count these, the blue ribbons that have occurred under your leadership, Huff Elementary School received the blue ribbon. The board approved a unique agreement with Incubator EDU and the Ed Foundation, an agreement that has continued to provide resources, revenue, and innovation here in our school district. Brian Battle was elected to his fourth term, and Joe Ruffalo, a second term, were reelected, and you were elected to serve on the Board of Education. We began live streaming. I'll let you decide if that was a good move or not. Board approved the formation of the new Input 220 Committees to study school start times, and then a conversion was made into online policy and policy review, and I know that has been at the center of a lot of the work that you've done in terms of impact on our board and policy. In 2016, the board approved new start times. Countryside and Grove Elementary received the blue ribbon. The Ed Foundation sponsored and began STEM, and if you look at where we're at today with that, throughout this district with facilities to support it, it was really the planning of those seeds. The Facilities Committee and Administrative Interview Architects for the Master Facilities Plan and recommend DLR. Input 220 recommends changes to school start times to the board, and a 1.34 mil Huff Elementary front entry renovation and concept was put into place. In 2017, BHS offers students blended learning and class choice, expanding that, and really the foundation for some of the conversations we've had about the next iteration of that. Penny Casimir and Sandra were both reelected. Gavin Newman and Mike Shackleton were elected to the Board of Education. Governor Roner signs evidence-based funding of student success, and I had to ask what this was. There are mumps in Barrington.
Oh, there were mumps.
So it was a little thing called mumps in Barrington, but I think it was offset by Brad Paisley showing up at Barrington High School graduation. The board approves, in 2018, the board approved a $185 million referendum question to approach the community in April 2nd of 2019. The board approved the Facility Master Plan, which was just a tremendous amount of work. Board votes to officially rename the Pepsi Building, the District Administrative Center. BH students, BHS students hold a walkout for safer schools and stronger gun control. The board also purchased the Grove mobile classrooms. So you were here for the purchase and demolition. And then SEL Green Dot bystander intervention took place. I think that begins a series of things regarding safety that you have helped lead and bring to our school district. In 2019, Roslin Road got the blue ribbon at that time. Barry, Leah were elected, and you were reelected to the Board of Education. The board approved the change at the BHS to iPad devices, and the board decided to go off the NSLP school lunch program at that point, expanding what amazed me in my first trip here with the offer of sushi in our high school. District-wide radios, administration, communication, and emergency direct communication with law enforcement were enhanced in 2019, again, under your leadership on the Safety Committee. 2020, the virtual board meeting, the first virtual board meeting took place, stopped the bleed kits in all classrooms, and full staff training was completed, and then we had COVID-19, really putting every board member and superintendent on the front lines of probably what arguably is the most difficult time in education and leading through that. At the same time, a few days, I think, before COVID-19, the restructured referendum of $147 million was passed and supported by this community, leading to all of the referendum that, work that we talked about. In 2021, Petty Casimir, Gavin Newman, and Mike Shackleton retired from the board. Erin, Katie, and Steve were elected. We demolished all those mobile classrooms that you worked on, reviewed design plans for the BHS referendum construction, and I had the good fortune of being named Superintendent of Barrington. In 2022, we approved Framework 220 core beliefs, learner profile, mission statement, and strategic priorities. We sold the Woodland property. Prairie Station Grove, Roslin, and Sunny Hill renovations were all completed, and we kicked off construction at Barrington High School with the initiation of the second phase of Framework 220. And in 2023, you retire from the Board of Education. Lee and Barry and Diana Clopton were elected. There have been significant renovations throughout the district, including the renovation of Field of Dreams. Construction completed Countryside and Huff. We're beginning construction at Rose, ELC, and Lions. My retirement or my resignation was approved, and we began construction at North Barrington Rose, ELC, and Lions. I want to just thank you from my perspective, one, for supporting and bringing me here, and two, for your constant and consistent support. I knew I could always call you, one, to keep my sanity, but two, to give me your honest and direct feedback, the work you have done, safety and policy, and the consistency you bring to this Board of Education during my tenure here is very much appreciated. I think someone earlier said, and it's really, it really resonated with me, whenever there's controversy, you sought to find common ground and bring people together, and that is a skill I'm sure that serves you very well as an attorney. I'd love to know if that skill's at home, this common ground piece. It's a skill we see here. This might be manipulation at home, I don't know, but I just think you have served that role in very, during a very difficult time. So thank you for your leadership and all that you have done. I've appreciated my I've appreciated my time with you for sure.
Abby, I go. I mean, Angela, I think what Dr. Hunt said about you is all accurate. What we heard during public comment is all accurate as well. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, I'm really gonna miss you as a colleague. I know it's not goodbye, per se, but, you know, your compromising skills were amazing. Finding common grounds, being able to, you know, take two very, in some instances, taking two very divisive opinions and making it one was, you know, definitely your strong suit. And, you know, that's gonna be missed. But while I'm confident the board will, you know, fill that gap, you know, your skill set is just unmatched. And, you know, aside from that, it's that smile that you always have. You know, you're always optimistic. We make decisions with care, or you make recommendations with care. That's just, you know, something that's been forgotten in so many instances. And, you know, it's refreshing that that still exists on these types of boards, where, you know, every decision you make is scrutinized, every position you take can be challenged. And, you know, you always fought with, you know, with dignity and with pride. And, you know, you're, again, you're just gonna be missed so much. I have a fun story about you, too. And, you know, I will say that, you know, I've gotten the privilege of knowing you the last two years. But I still remember, like, one of our first in-person encounters. Your gift to me was a book, which I thought was so cool. And I remember thinking, oh, cool. Angela's given me some advice as to, you know, what I could do. And literally, the name of the book, I guess, I don't know if I can say this on, like, a public thing, but basically it was How Not to Be an Awful Board Member. And I'm reading it, and it's like, oh, okay, cool. Thanks, Angela. But you know what? Interestingly enough, and I will certainly, you know, pass it on as well to our newest board member. But I thought it was very enlightening, because even though the book said it was funny, I remember reading and thinking, oh, gosh, this seems like so commonsensical, but this is not what I do. So thank you for that. And just, again, thank you for all that you've done. And I have no doubt, just like with Dr. Hunt, you know, we'll be crossing paths again. Just might be calling you for some advice as well, as things progress here in D220. So thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
Oh, and, oh, you wanna go? I'm Russell Ford. You can go. Go ahead.
That's all right.
Okay. Well, Angela, I'm really, really grateful to have had you as my board member coffee buddy for the last two years. And that's because I don't think I've seen anybody else at this table earlier than you due to our 8:00 AM policy meetings, which I'll miss having you on or in. So the first time that you and I met in person for coffee at Cook Street, I told you that I thought I would learn a lot from you, and that's proven true. Especially on policy. After your six years on it, you just taught me how to navigate our substantial policy manual, which, as we all know, is online now. Taught me the difference between proposing, like, amending policies and new policies and what the difference was between that and procedures. And I think between your profession as a lawyer and my profession as a journalist, we might have come to a consensus to elongate some of those meetings. And I think it played out well, our mutual love of words. And I think that sometimes it played out with a lot of specificity, too, in our policy meetings. And also, I'm pleased to hear that your gift was equal opportunity, because when we had coffee, you also gifted me with the exact name, Steve, is Richard E. Mayer's How Not to Be a Terrible School Board Member, Lessons for School Administrators and Board Members. So I think maybe we should all be reading it. It does hold pride of place. I laughed out loud when you gave it to me. It was an autographed copy, too, from you, which I did learn a lot from reading it and, and from you. So it has pride of place in our family room bookshelf, and I still pick it up as a reference now and then. So thank you so much for your eight years of service to our board. And please drop by anytime you want coffee at 8:00 AM. You know where to find us. And a little secret is that I've actually never seen Love Actually. So if you ever want to do, like, a movie night or popcorn night, I need more education from you. So more guidance from you on that. So you might have to arrange that when you have massive amounts of free time after your board retirement.
Thank you, Erin. I'm gonna come hug you, but I don't want to make this longer, so I'm gonna do it all afterwards.
Okay, we'll do.
All right, so I'll go next. So Angela, I have to say I'm so aw of you. It's only been four years. It hasn't been long enough. But I've just been so impressed how the priority you put in your family. Family has always been your priority. And if you have to leave a meeting, you have to leave a meeting because they are number one, and I'm just so impressed with that. But in the meantime, you've had a full-time legal career, and you've put your heart into the board. So I don't know how you could divide yourself in three ways and do a great job at all the things you've done. But you have done a great job at all the things you've done. And your family being here today is testimony to that. So I give you all the credit for eight years. It just amazes me that you're able to keep all your priorities straight and really do a great job at what you're doing. I appreciate our communication, our conversations over the years. You were always respectful and listened to my point of view, and you helped me to think through some very difficult decisions and controversial issues. And I just feel like you were truly collaborative with this board. You set a great example, both how you communicate with the community, but how we communicated, you know, within the board. So I just have to thank you. As I say, four years was not enough. I wish you were continuing so we could continue to work together. But I feel like we did good work for four years. And it's been great sitting next to you and, you know, sharing little tidbits and helping each other to, you know, kind of keep some humor with the stress of being a board member. So I send love and thank you.
You're close, so I still get to. Oh, okay. I'm gonna somewhat read, so I don't get emotional if you get emotional. So you're not only an amazing board member, but you are an amazing friend. I've learned so much from you these last two years, and the district is more than lucky to have you fighting for our students for these last eight years. And before I joined this board, I knew you were someone that I could only hope to emulate. You've managed to be a board member that truly strives to represent the entire community. You know how to listen to all sides of an issue, and you're always encouraging us to work towards a compromise. You're the type of board member that carries around your oath of office as a reminder of why you were elected. I know this because in our many, many conversations, you've referenced it. It's amazing. You hold the idea that an effective board member must have an open mind, seek the facts, listen to all viewpoints, and come to a decision without bias, but what's in the best interest for our community. And that's something I strive to follow. It's so hard to accept that it was time for you to move on. But this position can take a lot out of you, and I commend anyone that puts themselves out there to serve our community. It's not easy. I can only hope that enough of your wisdom has rubbed off on me. That and your ability to frame an argument around one of the best Christmas movies ever. You're an amazing mom, friend, lawyer, soundie board, actress, singer, and board member. I'm not sure what I'm gonna do without you, but I'm so grateful for your service to our wonderful community.
So, go ahead, go ahead. So, you know, lots of good things have already been said, and I agree with most, almost all of them. And wordsmith comes to mind when I think of you. I think of, like, policy, equity statements, our board priorities every year, and making sure they're exactly correct. And, you know, looking this direction, too, I see that continuing. And you're always prepared and know the issues and do the homework, and that's commendable, and spend the time. One of my fondest memories is sitting at that PTO forum, the first one. We were sitting right next to each other, and we both had our yellow pads out, and we were taking notes. And then we looked up at each other, and we were like, and we both grinned. It was like, oh, my goodness, two attorneys taking notes on yellow pads. So anyway, thank you for your service and best of luck in the future.
Thanks, Lea.
Awesome. Well, one of my fondest memories, Angela, is our time together on policy, which you were on policy for eight years, right? And I joined policy the same time you did, right? So, and just for the community, we read through every word of every policy. So, and I think that I'm so incredibly proud of our work together. And I think we were, like, equally adamant about how the policy should be presented and correctly, and should be corrected, and reflect everything that this great community is doing. But also our time in negotiations where every word mattered, and we really listened, and it reflected the needs of both parties throughout that. We read through every word of a contract as well. So just best wishes to you and your family as you move on to your next stage of service in the Barrington 220 community. I know that you will.
Thank you. Miss Andrea.
I wanted to make sure that there, I think there's some other board members that are in the audience. If you wanted to come up and say something as well, you may do so.
You wanna come with me? Hello, Wendy.
So.
Can you please state your name?
What school, what school you're at?
And your relationship to the district?
I talked Angela into running way back in the day.
You did.
I remember the first time we talked about school board was probably at Easter, and you had a million questions about it. And I was like, hmm, I think she's thinking about running, and then you did. And I'm so glad you did. Your eight years of service have been phenomenal for our community. And like others have said, I was always drawn to your logic and your compromise. In the most controversial issues, you would always ask, what are we trying to do here? And you would always find a bottom line that everybody could deal with that made sense and was always looking for the solution. And that is a gift, and not many people have that. So thank you for your, sharing your talents with our community. You have been phenomenal for the past eight years, and we really appreciate your service. Thank you.
See, I still miss that accent in the board. Like, you're so convincing, just when you say it like you do.
Mike, did you have something you want to say as well?
Just thank you. I don't think I can say much new after everything that we've heard. But I can say that, as you know, how much you're going to enjoy the freedom that you're about to gain. Probably wouldn't be still here today. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we also, Sandra also reached out to every board member that served with you, and I'm gonna pass this down to you.
Awesome. Thank you.
You've gotten, you've received letters and comments articulating many of the same themes, so I'm not gonna read them, and I'm sure you're gonna to look through those. But Brian Battle, Wendy submitted one. Penny Casimir, Mike submitted one. And there's also a community member that submitted one as well. So we put those in there for you to read. Again, I think they just continue to emphasize all the points that were stressed tonight about your service.
Thank you. All right, can I say a little something? I'm gonna try to keep it quick.
Lawyers never keep.
I know. All right, well, first of all, I just want to, thank you. This was so nice, you guys. I mean, it was very, I will always cherish this night. And all the words that you guys have said, I really, really appreciate it. I want to give a very heartfelt congratulations to Barry. A great team. And anyone who puts their neck out there to be on this board is really a special person, because it's hard and it's time-consuming, and it takes you away from things that are more fun. But it does say something about someone who wants to volunteer for their community and not get paid and still be accused of getting paid. So, you know, I've told you guys a million times that, you know, when I first ran for the board, I came in, I had an issue, and I was passionate, and then I look back on it now. And I think I ran because my father, who was a high school English teacher, had recently passed. And I think I was feeling that draw towards education. And strangely enough, tonight is the 10-year anniversary of his death. So I have a feeling he's probably somewhere in here right now, hopefully getting at least one or two laughs. So, you know, when I came to the board, I didn't know what I was doing. I mean, even though I talked to Wendy, I had no idea what I was up for. But, you know, I learned so many things and brought so many things home to my own family. But, you know, a few of them are acronyms. I learned to use the phrase dance floor and balcony, which I'd never used before in my entire life. I learned and kind of already had an idea of this, but had a reinforced knowledge of how passionate our community is, our parents, our kids. I learned definitely how gifted and dedicated our staff and our teachers and our administrators are. I learned how to collaborate. I did. I learned a lot of that at this table, because as a lawyer, you're typically negotiating for one side. But this brought me to a point where I could see both sides, and it was there at least, didn't have it as cultivated as I feel like this board brought me to. I found pride. I was so proud when, especially during Me Too Movement, Sandra, Penny, and I were seated as the officers. It felt so, like such a great example for our community. And I felt like I was part of something even bigger than what this whole thing is already. So that was definitely one of the highlights. I learned that I have a lot of new friends that I never would have met otherwise, and I'm so appreciative of that. And I also learned that it is somehow not the universal symbol that is the end of a meeting when you put your bag on the table and you lock up all your stuff. And tip key. So I was surprised it didn't resonate better. We need a greater curve in the table. So I wanted to, you know, we've talked a lot about, you know, coming to a consensus. And, you know, we're just getting off this election, and, you know, the division in the community and this and that. And we do have such a great community and such a collaborative group here. And I know that you guys will work to continue to bridge those, you know, people who feel like maybe they aren't being heard or represented. And just to, you know, bring. So in the middle of the election, I got a devotional. It's a proverb, which I think everyone likes proverbs. So I'm gonna read this little devotional. It's Proverbs 3:27 to 28. Do not withhold good from those to whom it is due when it is in your power to act. Do not say to your neighbor, "Come back tomorrow and I'll give it to you," when you already have it with you. And the devotion went on. I thought it was so interesting. It said, Charles Colson, I didn't fact-check this, but I assume it's correct. Charles Colson and George McGovern were at opposite extremes in the political spectrum. In fact, in the 1972 presidential campaign, they worked on opposite sides, but they both ended up with the same regret. Colson wrote, "As I think back on my life, my biggest regret is not spending more time with my kids. Making family our top priority means going against the culture where materialism and workaholism are rampant. It means realizing you may not advance as fast in your career as some do. It means being willing to accept a lower standard of living, knowing that you're doing the right thing for your children, and giving them the emotional security that they will draw on for the rest of their lives is the greatest gift." McGovern similarly wrote a book about his daughter, who died of alcoholism a few years later. And afterwards, McGovern said that he tore through her diaries and realized he didn't spend as much time with her as he thought he did. He could have been a better father. When Terry was at home writing her diaries that she missed her dad, but he probably didn't miss her because he probably didn't care about her, McGovern said that wasn't true. He gave parents the advice, "Show your kids love by spending more time with them, especially during their adolescence years, no matter what it costs. That way, neither of you have regrets." And I know that that is, I know we all love our kids, and we all spend time with them, and we all put them as a priority. But I just want to encourage you to continue to see that even though we have differences and not everyone is thinking the exact same way, we still have the same desires, and we'll probably all still have the same regrets. So I hope that you will continue to try to meet in the middle, to compromise, to see each other's sides, to listen, and not just listen, but hear the words that are being said, and understand how important it is to, you know, let all people in this community feel that there is healing that's. community feel that there is healing that's in process. And I think that'll be the biggest gift that you can give. And on that note, I know you can do it, because we got rid of D sub bonds, and I hope that you can keep doing that, and that was a compromise, and it felt good, no regrets. So anyway, thank you for everything, and I'm putting my proverbial bag on the table.
Oh my gosh, excellent. So I think we've got some cake and things like that, so how about if we adjourn? And we'll vote on that, and then take a quick photo?
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's great. I've got tears all over.
And then we'll, then we'll pull out the cake. Does that sound good? So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
If you want to second it, too.
Too much, that's legal. All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposition? All right. Let's, let's.
No, I'm going to stay longer.
Let's take a quick photo.